Okay. Okay, good evening and welcome to the Joint North Bend City Council, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session Agenda for Monday, December eighteenth here in the council chambers, it's four thirty. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and go straight into public comment. Do we have anybody online for public comment? And nobody signed up in person? Okay, so no public comment this evening. Number three on the agenda is O R S regarding the sale or lease of properties owned by an urban renewal agency. This is a work session agenda request by Councilor Nordoff. So we have fifteen minutes for this agenda item and we'll take the first five minutes for Councilor Nordoff to go ahead and open her introduction. I'll ask the city reporter to kind of help us with timing on that.
I have a question for Councilor Wolf.
For Councilor?
For our city attorney.
Our city attorney.
Mr. Wolf, are you online? Yes, there you are. So my question is, several times in the past, the mayor has not let me finish a presentation and has moved along to give the floor to somebody else. Most recently, she took the floor away from me and gave it to the city administrator before it could even start, and I think forget exactly what that was. And so I would like, as a point of order, may I please finish my presentation before I have to yield the floor? And I will be moving right along. It may take more than five minutes. I hope not. But it's very disconcerting to be interrupted and have to yield the floor continually.
Well, this is, this is a work session agenda item. They're per your rules. They're capped at fifteen minutes. Sounds to me like the mayor is trying to get everybody involved and have everybody have some time to make, to, to discuss this. So I would suggest you get started, counselor, and if, if you need more than five minutes, then, then we can have that discussion.
I will just note that everybody chimed in at the last work session and at the last urban renewal agency meeting. Everybody here on the council chimed in. So now it's my time to talk. I will point out first that the last page that I pointed out of the urban renewal plan, the urban renewal plan is still in effect. It has not been preempted by the waterfront development plan. They are side by side. And in the material that you got for tonight, it, the plans are at the very back. It has pages on both. You have the urban renewal plan and the North Bend Downtown Waterfront Master Plan comparison. So they're both in effect. The waterfront master plan only includes between Sherman Avenue and down to the waterfront and only going up probably to Florida Street, somewhere along there. It does not include the urban renewal plan, which goes south to the Mill Casino, west to right by Safeway, everything north of Virginia Avenue, that's in the urban renewal plan. The downtown area down to Florida, the Lincoln Square area, that's all in the urban renewal plan. And then we also included Simpson Park, the developed area of Simpson Park. So it's incorrect to say that the urban renewal plan has been replaced by the waterfront master plan. That's an incorrect statement. So I'm just pointing that out. Now, my, my main point is, and I'm glad we're doing urban renewal things. It is good to see things happening downtown. I think the pocket park's gonna be good here. The visitor center relocation, that was a long time coming. It's awesome. My point here is that we passed a resolution in order to authorize the purchase of the Chicorelli property, which was three different properties. And I went and I listened to the, the, the executive session on the urban renewal, it was an urban renewal executive session, and I didn't see anything speaking to the lease. And so maybe I picked the wrong executive session, but here's my point. In the state statute, O R S four five seven point two thirty, anything dealing with land, acquisition or disposition is to be done formally. Urban Renewal Agency is all the way through it. Now, unless, unless I'm missing something, I'm not aware that we have authorized the executive director to handle this for us. In my opinion, and I, and I've spoken with attorneys about this, and they are saying that no, the agency approves both a purchase and a sale and a lease. So that's my whole point. And it also says in the urban renewal plan that you have to amend the U R plan if you're acquiring property that isn't specified in your U R plan. And this property is outside of the waterfront development. So there's nothing anywhere that answers that requirement. Those are my two points. Where have we authorized the E D to sign the documents? And we better pay attention to what the original plan says, which it says that you amend your plan. It's, it's, there's minor and there's major. It's a major amendment to acquire property that is kind of outside of what you said you're gonna do. The waterfront master plan is full of, we're gonna buy this, this, and this. It's full of it. The urban renewal plan is not, and this property, the Chicorelli's property, is not in the waterfront development master plan. Let's see, what am I missing? I agree that I'm trying to be part of a dream. I'm the only one who seems to put things on the agenda. And Jenny and I have worked together to try to convince the council to authorize the Parks Committee to meet more than never. And now there's, there's an invitation to the public to join a committee. Join a committee that never ever meets. Who's gonna do that? And I've had comments from people that, oh, I got an invitation to a volunteer celebration and what the heck? I've never been invited to a meeting. So that's an aside to what my focus is here tonight, but this is the most passive board that I have ever been. Can't seem to regulate twenty-four chickens in a neighbor's backyard, can't seem to have the Parks Committee meet, can't refer the Parks Committee a memorial bench policy, what else? Passive. But enthusiastic.
I mean,
that's, I'm gonna take, I'm sorry, but, but these are the two things. Unless I'm missing something, where have we authorized the executive director to sign the leases? Because it seems to be a requirement and we seem not to be addressing what is in the urban renewal master plan about acquiring property.
Would you like our attorney to respond to that question?
That would be great, sure.
Great, thank you. We, I know we're time sensitive.
Make sure that she's done with her comments first.
Okay. Did you want to continue on your comments and your introduction before we have our attorney?
I, I wanna run through briefly what I have.
We are, and just to remind the council of the rules of the council, so when we have an agenda like this, it is fifteen minutes or we, and usually it's five minutes for interd- introduction, and then it's a total of fifteen minutes. But we could, as a council, decide to extend, unless we feel that we're just repeating ourselves, but we could, I just wanna be mindful of what the rules are. So if you want to continue, then we can go on to the discussion part or finish your comments. Sure.
So, like I said, I think everybody kind of spoke last week and they were hearing Mr. Milliron, and I, I reviewed that session. I reviewed both the work session and the formal meeting, and I picked up a lot from the review. Because in the heat of the moment, you know, I was excited, and I admit I get loud when I get excited, so I apologize for that. But I want you to really think about this. You're setting precedent by not having the terms of the lease come to you as a body for a resolution to vote on it. And you don't do that stuff in executive session. I included in the packet earlier the, the guidance from the two state organizations, the Economic Development and the Legal Oregon Cities recommendations, yes. So that's background information. And they basically, as far as I can tell, say, they, they talk about R F Ps and R F Qs. Okay, we're kind of past that here. I understand why things kind of happened the way they did. But I also had put in the, the page from the, from our U R plan, that last page that talks about amendments. And I had the, the inclusion of the North Forty Beer Company lease. So this time, I sent in additional information by the deadline. And I'm just gonna go through it real briefly. On the maintenance for the North Forty, it says there, the response, let's see, tenant is required to keep the lease space in any improvements in good condition throughout the entire lease term, addressing any needed maintenance repairs and replacements. The responsibility applies to both structural and non-structural elements within the lease space. However, the landlord will share the cost for significant maintenance tasks on the property. Significant maintenance includes work on shared space such as landscaping, parking areas, and other communal parks. It also cover repairs or replacements of the major structural components like electrical, gas, plumbing, fire safety, H VAC, and other fund- founded foundational facilities of the property, excluding insta- any installation made by the tenant. So there's that. And then several pages later, I did include three or three examples of urban renewal leases, one from the city of Warrenton, one from the city of Fairview, and one from the city of, what was the other one? Wilsonville. They're all resolutions that were voted on and approved by the U R A. They were not done by an executive director. Okay, so the Salon Bella lease back on the maintenance section says tenant shall maintain, repair, and replace, replace the premises and improvements that's necessary to keep them in good order, condition, and repair throughout the entire term. Tenant's obligation extend to both structural and non-structural items, provided however that the landlord shall contribute to costs associated with any major maintenance needs for the, the premises. Major maintenance shall be limited to the maintenance and repair of the property, such as landscaping, parking, and other spaces on the property outside the premises, and does not include any maintenance or repair directly in, on, or, or upon the premises. In no instance shall the landlord be responsible for any maintenance or repair or due to damage caused by the negligence of the tenant. So it, unless I'm misunderstanding, there's more of a burden put on the, the, the beauty salon than there is on the beer company. And the, what, what I don't like is that Mr. Milliron sent us an email saying summarizing his interactions with Salon Bella, and it says, well, we would have told them what we would have fixed had they signed the lease. That says they're supposed to fix everything. It, it doesn't square. And there, there are now months to months, and they will be relocating, and that's, it's, it's water under the bridge, but it, it doesn't square, and that's another reason why, in my opinion, the agency signs the lease, not the executive director. We need to have a look at it. And I think we need to set a policy, so I would like support that we direct the city attorney to draft up, or somebody draft up a resolution that we approve and say that the agency is the one who approves the lease. The executive director, he's very knowledgeable. He's very talented. He's quick on his feet. And he will do a good job, I feel, in bringing it back to the agency so that everybody is on the same page. And I think it's fair to the community. I think it's, improves transparency. It makes for less misunderstandings. And I think it's the best policy, and we need to set a policy if we're going to do this. That's the end of my remarks.
I have a question. And what are you implying when you say it's not square?
When, who in their right mind would sign a lease saying that they're responsible for fixing things? The major things, there's property, that's the big thing. The premises is the building. And she noted how much was wrong with her building. There's water running in from the courtyard. The plumbing doesn't work right because there's a, there's root blockage in the drain line. There's heat in only half of the building. There's problems with the breaker panel.
But what, what are you implying?
I'm implying, I'm implying that when the lease comes to her and says, you are responsible for fixing these, and then we'll tell you what we'll fix. In other words, the urban renewal.
You're implying, you're implying something. What are you saying?
I'm saying that that's dishonest. That's dishonest.
You're calling the U R A dishonest?
Okay, spin it up if you like, Mayor Engelke. What I'm saying is, when I spoke with other people in the community about this, they're like, are you crazy? Who would sign a lease saying that you're responsible for everything? But then, oh, but we'll, we'll fix things once you sign it. Nobody will sign that lease. And their attorney recommended that they not sign it, and if that offends you, hey, I'm sorry, but those.
I just wanna make sure that I'm clear of what you're.
Yes, I, yes, and I, I can, I, it's right there, it's right there in Mr. Milliron's email to the U R A about this matter.
So I'd like to have our lawyer speak.
Context.
What, no, I'm not taking out, you just said it doesn't square, and I wanted to ask you what you meant by that.
Yes, it means, it means it's, it's asking someone to accept the responsibility of fixing all these elements in this rented space. And they're saying, because the lease came to them, and they immediately came back with, this is how, you know, we will fix the major things, so says the U R A, and you can fix the minor things. And Salon Bella came back with, here's the list of things, of deficiencies in the property that we've been living with because the old owner didn't fix things. So what is it that you're considering major, and what is it that you're considering minor? Because we need to know before we sign this lease. And Mr. Milliron, according to them, did not respond to saying, he, he responded on square footage and on the proposed rent terms. But he did not respond on, okay, this is what we're, we will fix, and this is what we would like you to fix. He, she, they told me that they did not get a response. And so in the absence of knowing, why would they sign a lease saying, oh, yes, we will fix everything? And Mr. Milliron said, oh, we would tell them what we would fix after they signed the lease. Nobody would do that if there's, if they've got a brain in their head. It's not, it's not straightforward. It's just not.
So council, we're at sixteen minutes already. I do want to hear your thoughts and to hear the so, Councilor Nordoff has had her time. So now we'll go ahead, and if it's okay with you, are you, if we, are you okay if we extend us past the fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go ahead and hear from our attorney. There's lots of accusations in theirs and indolentos, and so I'd like to have some clarity on that. That's, I wanted to be really clear what her which, and, because I feel like some accusations that the U R A was not honest. I wanna make sure. You have the opportunity to clear that up.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So we'll, a, a few points in there. One, I guess we ended on the, the maintenance requirements. So the maintenance requirements are, are being reviewed by the Salon's attorney. We're in communication. We, we hope to have those addressed shortly. You know, your administrator and I worked on various versions of this lease. We provided it to both the, the beer company, the, the Salon folks. We've asked for modifications. We received some from the North Forty Beer Company. We're, we're awaiting them on the, from the Salon. And I guess I'd just like to leave it at that. They're represented by an attorney. We're gonna work through and negotiate the terms of a, of a lease. Regarding the the U R A and the acquisition of property, the Councilor Nordoff raises some good points about, we have to be able to look to the plan to have our authority to acquire property, and that plan does include acquiring property in the area bordered by Sheridan to the west and Coos Bay to the east, California and Washington avenues from the north and the south. That's in the, the original plan adopted in nineteen ninety-four. There was an amendment in ninety-eight. You know, one consideration for this governing body would be to review this, this old document. That might not be a bad thing for the U R A to do moving forward. But, but the property acquisition is listed in the, in the, the, the original plan to acquire property. As far as O R S four fifty-seven dot two thirty, that does impose some obligations on the U R A. As far as how to, you know, what steps to follow when acquiring or disposing of property. Not all action, you know, is, is, is necessary from the governing body. So your executive director does have authority, just like your city administrator. He's wearing his city administrator hat. Has a level of authority that he does not necessarily need to go to a governing body to take action. I'm sure he signs contracts on a daily basis, obligating the city in some form or fashion. Now, that's not to say that having a formalized process, whether that be via bylaws or some sort of policy, as, as Councilor Nordoff has suggested. You know, that's not a, a, a bad idea for consideration if we wanna have that discussion. You know, let's have it. But at this point, the, the the practice, so to speak, has been that the administrator or the executive director would, would walk through it with the, with the council or the U R A in, in a private session of, of the properties that either the council or the, or, excuse me, the city or the U R A would be considering acquiring and, and and what those leases might look like. That's been the, the process from my experience here. And if you wanna formalize that and put some, some bounds on, on what that process looks like mov- moving forward, I think that's a, a reasonable thing to do.
May I?
No, actually, it's per council rules, Councilor Nordoff. It's no opportunity for everybody else to speak and to ask questions of the city attorney. So Mr. Wolf, was there, it, I, I just wanna make sure that we have really clear for people who are watching and trying to understand this, that the U R A has followed the process. There's nothing here that is quote, not square. Because I think you could take that up for interpretation of that, that the, that the U R A didn't follow our policies. So I wanna just make sure that, that that is a very clear to anybody who's listening, that those are some accusations that are being made and from a counselor or from a, a U R A commissioner, but you are our attorney, and you are following the process of the leases and and the sale of the property, and we are following all laws and rules.
Yes, we, we, the, the U R A has, has followed the, the, the laws. It's, 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 it's found its authority in the plan. And its executive director has, has briefed the board on, 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 on leasing those properties and has executed one lease and is looking to execute another. Again, if, it, it, it kind of falls back onto what does this, what does this U R A board want? Does this U R A board want a more specified process moving forward? Where, wherein the, you know, the executive director might, might have to bring a lease back, you know, how, how what, what contracts or what leases would the executive director have to bring back? Would they only be, you know, contracts over a certain dollar amount? Those are, those are discussions that this U R A board could certainly have.
I do agree that it would be a good opportunity as we move into the beginning of the year for more U R A training. There seems to be some confusion on, on how things work, so that could definitely be a goal of the council is to do some training on the U R A board and look at if there needs to be a, a review of any rules or setting of bylaws. At this time, why don't we go ahead and listen to, or ask the counselor or the counselors and U R A commissioners if they have any questions for you about what Councilor Nordoff has brought to the agenda. So we'll start down at this end with Councilor Joan. Are we counselors or commissioners? We're still counselors. We're commissioners right now.
Oh, you're a joint work.
We're in a joint, so you're, maybe we're both asking questions with maybe your, your U R A commissioner.
So what I'm meaning is that it is within the authority of the executive director of the U R A to formulate leases and have them signed. In this case, we knew of the lease. We knew of the intention of the property. So that's, I read that, not being a lawyer, when I look at the, the U R A rules. So we were within the, the, executive director was within the bounds of his authority to work on the leases. Period.
Yes.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, as far as the whole lease process, I mean, you're going by common practices and standards throughout the, throughout all business. All these leases are pretty much the same. So as long as we're following the letter of the law and doing what we're supposed to be doing, I mean, I, I know that, you know, people aren't liking the raise in rent, but it is what it is. Like rent goes up every day across country. You know, who thinks they're gonna lease something and it not go up? As far as, I mean, I don't know the ins and outs of the conversations between the renters and the U R A as far as, you know, who is fixing what and all that. But that, I mean, if it was a problem, I'm sure it would be brought to the U R A to discuss. That's what Mark Wolf is for and her commissioner and her executive director. And as long as, uh, we're going by what we're supposed to be going on, I don't see a problem. As long as there's good communication between all the parties, and if there's a question, they know where to contact and bring it to us, or they can come here to the meeting and say their piece here too, so.
That's a goal.
Boy, I don't know. It's pretty hard for me to sit here and get bird-lipped by Nordoff there about being passive, not, not knowing what's going on, not, I, I, that just I wanna say pisses me off, but that, that really upset me. And for her to put an agenda item on there like the leases, and the next thing you know, we're talking about the Parks Commission. Well, I, I got my own hunch why we don't have a Parks Commission, but that's just me. Uh, yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I think there's two things going on. I think that there is the, the lease that we've all agreed that, and again, the draft of the lease and that we were all aware of, and then there's also like wanting more kind of control potentially or more checks and balances, or, or again, kind of looking at our U R A and how it is versus maybe updating it, and I think those are two separate things. I also wish that that Councilor Nora, when you, you would say we, because she's part of, we, you're, we're doing this together and we have voted. We you're we're doing this together and we have voted on it together. So we're we not a you. Um, and so again, we we've all, we might not agree. Because that's why there's seven of us and not just one of us. But I think that again, it's a we not a not a us. It's a we, we're working together to do this. And so that's those are so my.
Okay, thank you. Well, we've heard from Counselor Nordoff. I see our city administrator and your director, you you had your time at the beginning here. And has a heavy hand up. Did you want to?
So um there are some salient points because we know the news media reports just off of what they hear here. They don't actually contact us. And so I'm sure we're past our fifteen minutes. So we have to, before I can speak, pretty much have to have the majority of the. Joint bodies okay with me going ahead and.
We are at twenty-seven minutes, but I think it would be, you are in the nitty gritty of this. So I think it would be worthy to hear maybe five five more minutes.
Yep.
Conclusion um of this discussion. So I appreciate you asking. Thank you. And then we'll move on to the next agenda item.
All right, I I appreciate it. Um, from a staff point, um, understand that when I hear the words not square. Um, that I'm just a bold-faced liar and that doesn't sit well with me. Um, and and it is disconcerting. Um. And it's very unfortunate when. Everything that we're working for is front-page news in a very controversial way, when there's nothing controversial or underhanded about this project. Um, the counselor speaks of being on the same page. It's very hard to remain on the same page. When a member breaks rank and decides to go and interject and become operational. And then start to use her personal email address to conduct official business and have documents back and forth. And then to make assumptions from those documents rather than to come sit down and talk to me. Um, very much like I walked you all through unfortunately very quickly, there's actually a timeline and the facts matter. And I will say this because I'm notorious for it. Do not allow the facts to get in the way of a good story. And so we 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 heard some yarns. Um. As as members, um, I work with the city attorney because as a body, that's the we, a body. Mark and I work very hard trying to maintain you your your fiduciary fiduciary responsibilities. And to make sure that you stay um away from misfeasance and malfeasance. And if those are words that that you're not aware of, I'd encourage you to look them up because you 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 are elected officials. Now regarding the lease terms, um, the lease terms were discussed with the U R A. On two occasions. And they are on that recording because I listened to the recording and I pulled a transcript of those recordings. So they were discussed in great detail with the U R A board twice. Also, the authorization to purchase was predicated on the agreed-upon lease terms. We would not have bought that building if we did not have a tenant, which was the brewery locked in. That was the understanding of the premise as to why we were buying the building in the first place. To fulfill what we had been working on for some time. Now, the counselor, um unfortunately, really causes um. Misinformation, disinformation when she puts leases. Uh, or versions of leases or versions of what she's been told instead of coming to who she should be, which is her professional staff. That's not to say that she shouldn't hear. You shouldn't hear what other folks say. As the counselor said, if they want to come, they can approach you. They get three minutes, okay? But um, uh, the facts are salient. The facts are that. There was version one of a lease. That was sent based on the tax records for the square footage as an initial discussion point. With North Forty and Salon Bella. The only difference between the two was whatever square footage is set on the county records. And the one obviously had the owners different, the address is different. But you have your city attorney here in his office, just like when we asked him to write up contracts, they wrote the lease agreement. And so that was the starting conversation. We sent it to both. We said, I sat down with Salon Bella. Um, I communicated uh via phone and via email with North Forty because they were in Roseburg. And both were given the opportunity to come back with any questions. During that first meeting with Salon Bella, they raised issues and valid issues about the square footage. That's because at one point a wall was changed and and boarded up and no longer was part of their space. Which meant that building permits go to the county. That's how they update their records. And when uh Salon Bella came back in a follow-up email and gave me their square footage. But we also had staff go over there and actually measure it. It was actually um our city planner who went in with um a digital tool. And measured the both properties. Our square footage was actually less than what the owners of Salon Bella came in with. So we went with ours. That's what we were told it was. That's what it is. The um. The. Uh, North Forty Brewery came back with questions after reading the lease, just as we had asked. Review the lease from Salon Bella, come back to us with questions. Salon Bella came back with nothing. The brewery came back with questions. I told them that I have to review everything with our city attorney. I'm not an expert in leases. I'll review this. Can I get back to you? Mark and I went, we reviewed everything. Uh, and then Mark and I hammered out. Um, uh, some what I believe was acceptable language for maintenance. Our city attorney blessed it. We put it in the North Forty lease. Um, I don't think there was any other real major. Salient changes in the lease. There was a couple other questions and more questions than changes. We sent it back and they signed it. On the oh second and only meeting with Salon Bella, myself and Stephanie Wilson went. I had a copy of the updated revised lease with the language. But they weren't interested in seeing it, nor do you have it. Because they don't have it. They didn't want to see it. So therefore, what you have been distributing isn't the updated lease. In fact, it's version two. Uh, it's not even version two, but I'll get to that in a moment. And that causes confusion. Lastly, um. There was conversation. They sent to me a list of repairs, things that were problematic. And so I need to make sure that the record's clear. Um, uh, the Chickarelli's owned the restaurant, not the building. Paula Baldry owned the building. We bought the building from Paula Baldry and the Baldry Trust. Um, the Chickarelli's was looking to sell the restaurant with their equipment and potentially working out a lease agreement. Um, at a point, there was no real takers. They had moved up, I believe, um their timetable a little bit about when they were leaving. Uh, and uh, the Chickarelli's approached me and said that. Uh, the Baldry's were interested now in selling. Because my conversation wa- with them was it's going to be difficult to sell the restaurant and the equipment. If someone can't get the building or lease as a purchase. It's a very, and by the way, the name of Chickarelli's didn't go. It's it's. You know, Chickarelli's means something in this town. It's a good name. After that second meeting with the salon. It was apparent that they wanted a month-to-month through the end of March. Again, all communicated to you all in writing. And I worked with Mark and took that same updated language. The same identical language from the North Forty lease, put it in. The Salon Bella. And we sent that over to them. And their response was contact our attorney, which now you understand they're represented. We still don't have a signed lease. So without a signed lease, why would anyone be in there working to do any repairs? And under U R A law, which you keep pointing to, um, you cannot give. Less than a fair market, you know, preferable rate. The rates that we worked out that you all were given at two different meetings and approved is exactly what was reflected in both. But since they wanted to go month-to-month, so that they were going to leave and move elsewhere in North Bend. Um, through by by the uh, say, the first of April. I thought best, let's go ahead. We'll keep their rent exactly what it is with no changes. Just simply sign the lease. We'll get you your month-to-month. Um, and when you're out, we'll renovate the property and I'll approach the U R A about selling the property. Because yet again, there's been miscommunication on the ground that one, the brewery wanted that property, which is not. And two, um, that we wanted them out of there, which is yet again not true. The actual lease in the first year was going up roughly about, I think, two hundred and ninety-five, ninety-three dollars, give or take. In in the next year. My wife is probably going to kill me when I get home, but I know that what it costs when she has all her hair done and stuff. And and so if she went twice, that's that's the cost of the increase. Okay, that's the reality. I know what all of that costs. The counselor talks about R F Ps, R F Qs. We put out on the street a request for expressions of interest almost two years ago through the South Coast Development Council. To try to solicit a brewery. The previous council was aware of this. We we we, it was in the newspaper. It was on the TV station. I will tell you that Sean Gibbs, the then executive director with the South Coast Development Council, reached out. To more than a dozen breweries and also um put the uh request for expressions out on multiple platforms. It was actually Stephanie Wilson that landed the lead on the brewery. And she has nursed that lead and shown that property very quietly over the course of a year. And so you can imagine that when the Chickarelli's informed me. That the building owner Paula Baldry was now interested in selling because the U R A was never contacting Paula, nor had we ever contacted the owner. Because that's not what we were there to. We were there to help market their building. We also wanted to know whether or not the brewery had an interest. Um, so when she indicated, Paula indicated that she was willing and uh. I got engaged and worked with a commercial real estate agent and uh we worked out what it was worth. And we were able to negotiate a purchase price at three hundred thousand less than what the foremost commercial real estate. Agent and broker in our community said it was worth. I brought it immediately to the U R A. The U R A, every one of you, put your hands up and said, let's move with the deal. Okay, you also authorized a lot of repairs and things because we knew it was blighted. There are issues that we're still finding. We're still fixing those things. We've been very transparent. Is it going to cost us more than three hundred thousand? Unlikely, but it could, we shall say. But it is a tax increment, and that's exactly what you're supposed to be doing, is eliminating the blight. Trying to get fifty years more out of the building and then increment the value. And so the public doesn't understand that those lease agreements are taxable. They go to the county commission. And so they are taxable for the commercial side of that. Um. The um. It's unfortunate that we're now at a point where it's lawyer to lawyer. Because there was there's so much disinformation, misinformation floating around now. Kickbacks, you know, uh bribes. Um.
No.
Uh, no, it is circulating because of an email that you put in a council agenda. And I can show, I can show you. Madam America, you.
We're, the city administrator is not done with his presentation.
It was included with our quest uh for an agenda. So it's all floating out there. And so it undermines the good work that you all and the staff is doing. And so, again, it's unfortunate that we're front-page news. I understand the newspaper will be running a correction. Uh, because there was some assumptions as to who sold what. And so I wanted to take the time to clear the Chickarelli's good name. Um, they weren't in a hurry to do anything. Um, but they did reduce their timeframe from uh when they were closing. Originally, it was, we thought we had a little longer. But again, we're having a massive, you know, staffing shortage in restaurants. Um, and I was very, very glad. It was actually Stephanie that connected North Forty with the Chickarelli's. And they independently negotiated whatever deal. I'm not privy to what they bought and didn't buy. As your executive director, I'm not going to get in between someone else's deal. Your main street manager, who also works with me on Urban Renew, simply connected them and said. You guys, if it works for you all, work it out. That is what we try to do. We try to build relationships and make connections. So I appreciate, I know that was long-winded. Um, and last but not least, to clarify one last thing. It's on your own website. It's in the documents section. And so U R As from time to time, we'll update and revise plans. They can actually have minor updates, major updates. Lot of those things occur, okay? And it's a pretty onerous process. In fact, we, um, I think uh our finance director has a massive manual there, lots of documents that you probably have never seen. Every intimate. Process of creating the U R A is still on record and still filed, okay? This is a map. And I made it very, very clear. This is your adopted. City of North Bend Urban Rental Agency Downtown Waterfront District Master Plan nineteen ninety-eight. And so I understand that the counselor also reached out the several U R A experts. And I know at least one of those experts said, go see your city attorney. We don't give advice to elected officials. We work for the bottoms. This is your waterfront plan, okay? She has just told you that none of these properties that we have acquired. Are in that plan. All right, I took time and the mayor took time after the last meeting. And pulled up and showed the counselor where these plans were online. Said if you have questions, contact me. It is right there and the theater is right next to it and your parking lot's right in middle. Is there anyone that wants to see a close-up of that map? It's online. It is part of your plan. U R As are allowed. And in fact, I am working, and the reason I knew that the counselor contacted the consultant. Is because it's a consultant that works down here on the South Coast and we are so are also working with that consultant. Okay, and it's also the consultant that just helped Kuz Bay with um their major update for Empire. So I I say that because you see in your packet. How some other U R As operate, okay? They may have adopted different rules and that they can. But your action. I'm responsible for implementing your vision. The only reason that you would want to get so in the weeds is if your executive director is not doing what it's supposed to be doing or they're going off, okay? But to say that, we're going to work on so that the public understands. What we're supposed to be doing. We're going to be working on some bylaws and we're going to bring those back to you. Mark and I already um have a document. Elaine's going to be working with you. Early next year, Elaine's going to come in. She's going to do some training, not necessarily for. The whole board, but because the public doesn't understand the U R A, because all this disinformation, misinformation. When folks go out and say you broke in the law. The public is the quickest to say, there you go again. We did not, you've heard it from your city attorney. We have not violated the law. We've not broken the law. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. It's in the plan. And I'm hoping that we're going to resolve the lease agreement and get this beyond us and that we work as a team. So thank you. I appreciate the extra time that you afforded me.
All right, um, I'm going to go ahead and move on to agenda item number four. This is um number four of the work session. Um, Counselor Jones's response to. Um, Counselor Jones's response to citizen inquiries regarding how North Bend Council and the city administrator share power. Um, she has some information for us on page thirty-five of our work session. And um, so that was forty-six minutes. Um, just so you're aware of where we're at with our timeframe and just the reason why I sort of want to make sure I'm highlighting the council rules is because I do think it's important for efficiencies of meetings to follow the council rules the best that we can about when people can talk and um, share their views. Um, so typically it is five minutes kind of of an introduction, about fifteen minutes of the whole agenda. And that's just so we can work through the other business that we have. Um, but as you can see, we can, if it's something, this is, the gravity of the situation that we just went to did more, some extra time, um, but I'm hoping this next agenda item could be a little bit more concise. Counselor Jones.
Time we're begun.
So, yeah.
Um, because I'll miss a council tomorrow due to some surgery in Portland. I'm utilizing my ability to call one work session agenda item to make this written statement. It was submitted uh, accordance with our rules, a Wednesday deadline to make it into the work session and to make it into the packet that's available for everybody, including the public. Um, normally I would have read what I prepared here in council at the Tuesday's meeting. I do expect to be stopped at whatever the appropriate time limit is, whether finished or not. Um, my statement today concerns how our city government works in relation to concerns and questions uh, fellow community members have brought to my table. Uh, I do not speak for the council, nor am I the final judge on these matters. However, I can express my impressions publicly and record them into our public record at this time. Um, since being sworn into council in December twenty-second, I've engaged in a number of conversations with residents around troubling impressions they've gotten from social media or other outlets concerning city operations, in particular, some actions by the city administrator. Upon closer examination, personally, I have found these concerns have stemmed primarily from misunderstandings about how city government works. So before I walk through what I've learned about the process, I want to unequivocally state that my personal experience, research and inquiry into the concerns I've encountered so far have consistently revealed to me that all city staffers, including the city administrator, have acted within normal legal operations relating to those concerns. Have I agreed with all decisions? No. But my simple disagreement doesn't imply that something nefarious has taken place. Indeed, despite my disagreement at times, I've found no fault on what I have reviewed. In arriving at the same conclusion over and over again, I've relied on public resources available to any one of us with access to a library, a smartphone or a computer. Anyone hearing this can trust and verify for themselves. Number one, the city's complete charter is available on the website. Alongside a library of instructive documents, there are links to the city's YouTube channel, which is called North Bend City. And, excuse me, which has all public meetings recorded in accordance with Oregon law and available for anyone to view. A highlight on this particular matter is a three-hour video of North Bend's in-council training concerning the relationship between the elected council and the appointed city administrator. The training was completed in twenty twenty-one, which was conducted by a League of Oregon City's Lead Council. While the training was outside of my town, I can confirm that what I've learned on this topic aligns closely with all critical details in this video. If you Google or use North Bend City site search using North Bend City Council Training Ten Habits, this video is the first hit you get. So the most common misconception I've encountered is how the city and the council share power. In particular, just how extensive the city administrator's authority actually is, which is granted by city charter, council ordinance and employment contracts. This delegation of authority to a city administrator or manager is one of the most prevalent forms of local government in the United States. And there is nothing unusual about North Bend's particular charter, ordinances or contracts concerning this. The reality is that the city administrator holds significant control on all aspects of running the city. Similar to how a corporate board and a company president operate, the council doesn't include operation of control, uh, control of operations directly. That is the work of the city administrator. The need for this delegation of control is a part of something unspoken that I believe most of us agree on. Small government. We don't want to pay our politicians. That's why so many cities model decisions and operations this way. Yet, running a city is complicated. It takes dedicated staff, more time than we can imagine. And so we delegate authority to the city staff over matters large and small. As a side note, in many ways, the job of running the city is bigger and more complicated than any corporation because the government is held to higher and more complex standards than any private entity. What I've observed is that frustration about particular outcomes leads some to convince themselves that unethical or unlawful activities have occurred when in fact, the activities are within legal bounds. And Oregon's public meeting laws prioritize protecting the speech of citizen commentators. Council is not a court of law where sides present their cases. The law requires the council to listen without judgment or interaction, full stop. That means when you hear something emotionally charged at a council meeting or otherwise, you are hearing one party's perspective. Often emitting crucial details in the urge to be heard. Commonly, all relevant details aren't articulated at that moment, in that meeting, or even in a later time. Unfortunately, that means accusations leveled against the city council or staff go unchallenged, particularly in social media. In light of that, I'd like to repeat my earlier statement. My personal witness, as well as investigations into events I was not present for, consistently revealed to me that all city staff, including city manager, city administrator Milliron, have conducted themselves within the bounds of normal legal operations. Those events include, among many others, since Mr. Milliron was appointed in twenty twenty, urban renewal activities, including those related to the Chickarelli property and the current leaseholders, U R A tiny homes discussions, former mayor Briggs' early and eventually incorrect assessment of events as well as consequences involving the airport, the TSA and paying a fair share of North Bend police costs for contracted services, police pool refurbishment, operating and funding, Pittam Loops understory removal in the park area that had common fire outbreaks and illegal camping, the disc golf played and placed in Simpson Park, city public meeting notices and records, events leading up to our former police chief's abrupt but voluntary resignation, and Facebook updates on the city page. I hope this information helps and encourages others to observe and verify the facts directly. We are all in this together. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Um, we'll go down the line here and see if anybody has any comments or questions for Counselor Jones. Counselor Paul, Counselor Saul, Counselor Noroff.
Yes, are are you asking us for comments on this?
Well, we're, it's the agenda item, um, and we're only seven minutes in.
She had me following along pretty nicely until we got to where she speaks about. I mean, it's real good until the, the uh, the tiny houses in the area of Simpson Park where the visitor center is. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that I'm the only one who asked when the council voted to declare that surplus property. I think I'm the only one and it was within three days. And Milliron, Mr. Milliron did not respond to me directly. He sent us all an email saying that, oh, there'd been a misunderstanding and no, we hadn't surplus any Simpson Park property and that it would be, that would not be advisable.
He mixed words.
That's what I'm saying about Counselor Jones thinks it's a mistake. It may very well be a mistake. But it sure was a big issue in the council meeting where Mr. Milliron presented it. It sure was on the front page of the newspaper as the headliner. And it wasn't true that the city council had surplus that property. That's a biggie, in my opinion. I think it's a good idea to go forward with considering it, but not at that location. And the only one who caught that was me. So I have, I have a problem with what you're stating, that everything sunky dory. Um, and that that should, that should not have been caught or sunk in, I don't know. And as far as the understory removal, the first time, there may have been notice that we were going for fire grants, fire protection grants. The understory in Pittam Loop, I don't believe, was ever brought to the council and we didn't learn about it until we were reviewing the, the agenda item for the vote to accept the contract. That's a biggie. What? This is fine? I don't think it's fine, Jenny. I'm sorry. All right, that's my comment. It's not fine.
And you're welcome to your opinion. Thank you for your. There's that team.
So, not unanimous.
Counselor Noroff, um, we still have a couple of minutes left and so I haven't had an opportunity to speak and I don't know if I should even try to correct the things that you just said that were inaccurate because I feel like you're not hearing.
What, what was inaccurate?
What was inaccurate was there's, there's some information here about the understory brush. We had, had discussions about that before. I don't know if it's even, I don't think you're hearing the message here. Um, the, and the piece about the reason why none of the council said, made a comment about the items being surplus is because the other six of us were tracking what he was saying. We knew that we were never talking about surplusing the park. That would be not something that we would ever consider. So it wasn't, none of us were looking for a, aha, you screwed up again, I gotta get you. Cause that's what it feels like when you come back at us. So nobody, it was a nips of words. I believe we even contacted the paper to correct the information in there because unfortunately, the media doesn't contact us uh, to confirm stories. So we corrected that. He said, oh, you're right. I did say the wrong thing because we were talking. So there's, again, you're back with the accusations. Um, do we want to take a minute to under, uh, address the underbrush or just move on?
Move on.
Okay, cause I think, I think you know that we had talked about it. There's no, nobody's trying to get anything by anybody. We are transparent. We um, welcome um, anybody. I think maybe one of the reasons why there's not, things don't rise to the occasion of uh, needing it necessary to be an agenda item is because the rest of us all feel comfortable just calling up the city administrator and say, can you walk me through this? I'm not sure I, I, I understand this piece. And so that's why it doesn't rise. So it's not that we're not, oh, we want to bring things forward to the council. Um, we talk about things. We have items on our strategic plan that we set uh, when we first, uh, a couple of years ago and we're working through those items. Those are the things that come up. So nothing really ever arises to the item.
Um, yeah, I just, I think um, others would agree. I've called the city administrator with questions because we have such a limited time here. We have a limited time. We have a mountain of things that we have to consider. So I think for most of us, the practice is to call up the city administrator and ask questions, which is what we're supposed to do. That's part of our agreement.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and really, anybody else in the city who has questions that want to further understand um, something or uh, something that's on the, on the counselor question, we welcome all um, emails and comments. And if I can't answer something, then I forward it to the city administrator who can forward it to the right staff, uh, person. So, you know, we'll go ahead and move on to the next council or the next work session item, but
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. And, and I encourage all of you to read that statement again because I think there might be some things that were lost in there um, to a particular counselor. So. We'll go ahead and move on to number five, uh, agenda item of the evening. That is our Kuzbay Estuary Management Plan, also lovingly known as the KABAM. Discussion on page thirty-seven, we've got our um, staff here will present an update on the proposed revisions to the Kuzbay Estuary Management Plan. So we'll go ahead here and hear from our um, city planner. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and uh, City Council. So tonight, as promised, I'm providing an update to the KABAM um, in advance of your January tenth work session and public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment and resolution related to the KABAM. So I'm gonna give you a quick rundown of what we discussed at the December seventh joint work session and the updates that have come as a result of that discussion and the public comment that we received. So, uh, Kuzbay Estuary Management Plan, Part One, Section one point three, Historical Perspectives, subsection two, has been updated to reference the Partnership for Coastal Watersheds within the plan. This is a local group of community members with affiliations uh, to cultural interests, economic development, natural resource protection, government agencies, staff, to include myself, uh, Jill Rolfe and Chelsea Schnabel, and businesses interested in the Kuzbay area. They've, PCW, has been instrumental in helping fi- find funding for this project and discuss estuarian health and conservation at their monthly meetings. And then there's been some renumbering as appropriate to add that section. Section one point five, the Citizens Involvement Program. And again, this is in the historical section. Um, so this has been updated to reference the most current O A R for Planning Goal One, which is citizen involvement. Background was, has been added for now, for the now defunct Kuzbay Estuary Advisory Commission that was removed in the nineteen nineties. We've added backgrounds to this round of revisions. Section two has been rewritten to express that the county will host the plan document and committee makeup and notices on their website unless otherwise agreed upon by the cities. And that's not to say that we can't or won't host the information on our website, but it just puts the onus on the county. Section two point one adds the Kuz Estuary Joint Steering Committee as a seven-member committee that is one elected official or their representative from the city of Kuzbay and the city of North Bend, an international port of Kuzbay representative, one tribal representative from each tribe selected by the tribes, the chair of the Kuz Estuary Citizens Advisory Committee, and the chair of the Kuz Estuary Technical Advisory Committee. Section two point three defines jurisdiction-initiated and citizen-initiated amendments, previously known as major and minor amendments, um, as amendments that affect the broader estuary or multiple parcels versus a single parcel amendment. Jurisdiction-initiated amendments will be larger projects such as changing management units or objectives, unit classifications and policies that form the basis for each unit's uses and activities. Citizens-initiated amendments will only apply to a particular parcel's use or activity. Section two point three point one, Process for Amendments, outlines that as the plan holder, amendments shall be made through the county and that notice shall be consistent with O R S one nine seven. Section two point three point two outlines the process for citizens-initiated applications. Section two point three point three outlines the process for jurisdictional amendments. And it's just a step by step, you know, how you, how you make application and everything that goes into it before it's approved. And then section two point four covers citizens' involvement. And so subsection one here, we get the creation of the Kuz Estuaries, Kuz Estuary Citizens Advisory Group, and defines the group's responsibilities, selection and process and focus. Subsection two creates the Kuz Estuary Technical Advisory Committee and similarly defines the group's responsibilities, application process, and specifically references technical experts from their respective fields. Uh, subsection three, committees and committee appointments, outlines the process for application and the appointment of committee members. Subsection four covers committee roles and responsibilities, outlines that there needs to be a chair, a vice chair, a secretary and their responsibilities, defines what a quorum is, voting percentages for decision-making, and what happens if a majority vote is not met. It outlines public meeting rules and notice requirements and defines three unexcused absences may result in a termination of appointment. Section two point five is the relationship to other plans. So this adds language stating that the jurisdictions will work through the Kuz Estuary Steering Committee as, to coordinate planning for the estuary and shoreline areas through the adoption of an inter, intergovernmental agreement. Moving on to section three point one, uh, this replace, replacement of the Special Considerations Map. So this map, um, we heard a lot about this at the last joint work session. And so the Special Considerations Map was a flip map for reference, which showed where management units were located. This has been replaced by a G I S layer map that is available. Which showed where management units were located. This has been replaced by a GIS layer map that is available on the county's website currently. Then there's been an update to policy number three. The Kuz Estuary Special Considerations Map, uh, as previously mentioned, the special considerations map is for reference only. And is being placed in the background, meaning that it's still part of the plan in favor of the digital version of the map. Which shows only the location of various management units. The actual Mylar map and management unit description are the regulatory products that we will use for plan implementation. It outlines the section, or policy rather, outlines that if there's a discrepancy between the digital and the original Mylar. That the original Mylar shall be the authoritative, authoritative source of information. The section adds a list of maps and available for regulatory purposes. And then moving on to part two of the Cabamp, which is. Another five hundred, six hundred pages of documentation. Um, everything that was changing in there has been rolled back. Um, we received a lot of public comment about, you know, things not being up to snuff. We're backing everything out. So the only thing that's gonna change is that it's gonna be digital. And then the agency's names are gonna be updated and relevant ORSs. Um, I'll get you copies of this update as soon as it's been finalized. There are some typographical errors in the version that I have. Uh, in front of me right now, but the content itself that I've just expressed to you will remain the same. And on January tenth, we are anticipating, council willing. Uh, adoption of resolution outlining the advisory and technical committee makeup. And commitment to future phases of the Cabamp update and the ordinance adopting this plan by reference into our comprehensive plan. So if you have any changes of anything that I've went through this evening, um, that you'd like to see, please let me know now so I can incorporate. Those into the text prior to the, prior to the public hearing on January tenth. And that is what I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Yeah. Oh, where are we at?
I would say that I would give them a little bit more of a deadline than like to hear now.
Okay.
Well, so, okay, so our timeline is. We have one more joint meeting, or is that, that, where? That's the day that we're voting at that joint meeting.
Yeah.
That is what we're anticipating, yes.
Yeah.
We're open.
And so, so now would be the time to ask the clarifying questions to be prepared for that vote.
Yes.
Right.
Or realistically, he should give you a sort of a deadline if you wanna send anything to us. That you think needs to be addressed, uh, you can also look at that as well. If you're prepared to tonight, that's great.
Yeah, okay. Then, okay, okay, so.
I, in fact, I had a, um, Kuzbay Response Co-op meeting today, which I'm. A board member of, uh, and expressed my concerns. This thing really scared me as far as, uh, anything to do with industry, because of the audience we've had and. And I think that the audience may change because of us talking about it. And anyway, I, uh, I, uh. I've made it pretty clear to all the stakeholders now in the bay, in the estuary that, that we need to. We need to have our voice heard. Uh, it's been kind of a one sided voice so far. So, uh, that's on my only comments. So it's getting out there now that our voices need to be heard as far as the industry in the bay. Um, we all are concerned with the estuary, but we all have to live together with the. With the industry and, and, um, and the estuary. And, and we have, we have for years. So, uh, it just, th- this thing scared me and I'm, I'm getting. You know, our four companies that, that are affiliated with the bay, I've got lobbyists coming on. Uh, it's, it's, I'm taking it serious because, because of the, the two meetings we've already had. So, yeah, but I sure appreciate your work there. That, you know, you're a lot of. Yeah, a lot of stuff there right there. Uh, but a lot of stuff's been talked about for two meetings too. And we, we gotta, we gotta either look forward or not.
Yeah.
So, all right, that's all.
Yeah.
Counselor Schultz.
So I, yeah, and again, I think Pat, a lot of it was that we have backed up a lot. So I think it gives you people some time. And so that was part of it is that there was a lot of discussions, but I think we've, we've kind of narrowed down what we want to agree on at this point. And I think that what we want to agree on seems pretty reasonable. Can we get a, either an email or paper copy of it before we say that we're good? Cause I just listened, but I'm, I would love a visual as well.
Absolutely. And I should have that by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you.
And so that means you, you wanna get our comments in by Tuesday of next week, Monday, what do you want?
Are you looking for comments? Are you looking for questions? Cause the intentions are that.
Questions.
But yeah, because they're, they're like, we're rolling everything back. They are digitizing this and you said, changing the name. Or there's like, there's sort of like two main things. So it's like, any questions about like anything else, I think can get moved. It's like, it's just. We need to move this piece forward. Yes.
Basically.
Committees though too. There's committing, there's certain sections.
And so on the committees, those will be by resolution. And so we say in the plan text that we're gonna create this committee. But we don't say who's gonna be on it, because as needs in the estuary change and as our reviews change. We may need additional experts in there viewing the plan.
Yeah.
Main thing is we need to have a forum then.
Yeah, so just.
January tenth is our next scheduled, uh, meeting. Counselor Nordock, did you have a question?
Um, I just wanted to share that I asked Chelsea Schnabel after the meeting to kind of. Explain what happens when Cabamp, um. Runs, runs into, um, a, a conflict with the new, the new law from the state legislature. That said that the port district only, they do not have to meet local land use control laws. They have to meet state laws and federal laws, but they don't have to meet the local land use laws. And she explained that if there ends up being a conflict between what is allowed by, say, the state law. And what is allowed in Cabamp. Cabamp has the option, whatever jurisdiction, whether it's us or Kuz Bay or Kuz County. Cabamp, that, that agency of Cabamp has the option to change their, their plan. In order to make it dovetail with what the state is requiring, if that makes sense. So that's what she explained to me and I just passed that out.
Any further questions? Okay.
There was one thing that, um, I appreciate, uh, Counselor Packall came and talked to me. And so is, is, uh, from, from the city administrator's side. When they look at these committees, you know, and they set them up, you know, they're like, well, we want one member from, say, this governing body. One from the Kuz Bay, say maybe one from Kuz County. Um, my, um. My input, uh, to the council is that they should be asking for, uh. Uh, to be able to make an appointment of your choosing, whether you choose someone on the council. Or you find someone who is an expert in this area that's gonna well represent you. Uh, that, uh, if you restrict it to the governing body, you know, unless you've got someone with, with a lot of time and a lot of expertise. So that was just my input.
And that was one of my edits on the proposed language was to add that ability in there.
Yeah. Any, one more question?
It's a, it's a question about like when you talk about the composition of the committees. I, I'm also concerned that there's not enough representation from possible industries. Or industries here already, just, just because tourism doesn't fuel. What we need to, to be able to stay living here, you know? And, and so if we, if the committees are all loaded up by people who are primarily like, I love it the way it is and I don't wanna change it. I don't wanna terraform more, you know, the work is gonna go out the door. And I, I appreciate how beautiful it is here, but you might as well terraform what we're already terraforming. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so, yes.
Great. I, I'm just concerned with the balance of the committee being too. No change, only environmental considerations are important.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll take that to my fellow planners.
Yeah. Good representation of all would be appropriate.
Yeah, thanks for all the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for recognizing it.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and review the city council agenda for tomorrow, December nineteenth. I'll have the city administrator kind of walk us through. We, I did confirm that, um. Our item B, Brad Corning, we gotta, we gotta make sure all the Bulldogs get here. Uh, we're, so we'll start with A, that's our ceremonial swearing in of Fire Lieutenant Rector. That'll be exciting. And then, um, Coach Brad Corning is receiving or has received Coach of the Year, so we have a proclamation for him. So. Don't you have like the Batman counselor call has like a, a Batman light? Don't you have a bulldog light that you could send out to? All the Bulldogs to have them come in for the proclamation?
Yeah, that, that's a good bulldog. I ain't gonna be here.
Wow, we need the beacon. So help me rally the troops, maybe Counselor.
Know that this will happen?
I did.
Okay, but there's something going on tomorrow.
I know. I confirmed with his wife that he'll be here, but maybe you could let the teachers and your, and your teacher beacon light. Get there.
Okay.
Um, but the final message was, yeah, we will make it happen. Okay. Um, so, but yes, and Mr. Milliron, we've got the consent calendar on here, is there? This would be the time if anybody wanted to pull something, right?
I'm pulling the minutes.
You would like to pull the minutes, okay?
Yes, um, on the page three, when we did council comments. My comment was first and Counselor Jones was last, so I would like the, like it to be reordered, working up. Because it kind of looks like that she made some statements about me and that I had nothing to say about it, which was not the case. So start with me and then she's, she's had the last word. She had the last.
Are we, are we rearranging the minutes?
Um, so that's always up to the governing body.
Oh, for crying out loud. If you listen to the tape. So why is it not reported that way? Why?
I mean, I don't think it's our job to be telling the city reporter on how to organize for.
Why is it different? Why is it not in the order in which this, it's, it occurred? Why is that?
All right, so Madam Mayor, we'll pull it. Uh, it'll simply just go to a vote immediately afterwards. And it'll be the will of the council, uh, and as a standalone, it'll just have a first, second discussion. And then it can move forward, um, as the will of the council.
You, you could have submitted that after you read the minute, minutes, Counselor Nordock. You could have just.
I'm sorry, speak up please.
You could have asked to have your name first, if that's what you wanted before the meeting. I mean. You could have been, you read the packet before the meeting. Why not just?
I, I, I read this, yes, and I'm making a point that, yes, I can pull it and that's my, I mean.
You're, you're allowed. I'm just.
She, she asked, she asked for us to.
Sorry, we're just looking at ways to be a team here instead of being so accusatory.
Put it in the order and where it was set.
It's your approach. Look at how you're acting right now.
Well.
It's your approach. You're slamming things, you're mad.
I'm mad.
Yeah, it's clear.
Because I'm hearing, well, it's the council, it's council will. It's just like.
Five minute recess.
Yeah, that's good. Let's, do we, do we need a recess or should we just?
Body break, recess, calm down, whatever you wanna call it.
Let's just go ahead and was there anything else from the, um, agenda, uh, the, the, um, consent calendar?
Everything else, uh, Madam Mayor is, uh, straightforward, um, so it's all.
We'll have, um, yep, and then we have five, which is five, yeah. Five is our. Eight quarter for visitor center.
Yeah, so brief presentation on that. So you've got. I'm the Works Director and your visitor information center.
I'll be fairly brief on this. Uh, we ordered a hazardous materials survey. Uh, I believe near the end of August, we bid the. Visitors Information Center in September. At the time of bid, we still hadn't got our hazardous materials survey back. Uh, we let the contractors know anything discovered basically would be dealt with as a change order through the city. Once we got into the project, we got our hazardous material survey. We found we needed to abate, and I don't know how familiar you are with asbestos requirements, but it's, um. Fairly onerous and believe it or not, anything with over one percent asbestos in it is required, required to be addressed. Through an abatement procedure by hazardous material contractor. Long story short. Our rules allow staff to. Do change orders once contracts awarded in our business section. I believe that's section four or five, excuse me, five. Of our municipal code, up to twenty five percent. We ate almost all that up with asbestos abatement on the first change order. Um, when we did that work, we exposed the ceiling, uh, and we were gonna have to do some repairs. After doing the abatement, uh, Stephanie honestly wanted to redo the ceiling to begin with. And I said, no, we'll, we'll hold it off here a little bit. Um. But. We had two options on completing the ceiling. Once we did the abatement, one was to cover it. Um, Stubbin and Coffee remodeled the structure in two thousand ten or twelve. I can't remember, but it was fairly recently. Um, they buried it. That's the reason we didn't see it till when they remodeled. They buried it. T-bar ceiling. We got a quote to T-bar the whole thing. Uh, in the amount of twenty six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. And we also got a quote to abate it. And part of the reason we got a quote to abate it, um. Mr. Milliron referred us to. The brownfield, uh, Karen Homelak, who's administrator on that, we had the discussion with them and they will fund up to sixty thousand dollars. I always thought of brownfield as, as hazardous materials on site. It actually has, will deal with hazardous materials in the structure. It's exactly what it's for to do remediation, get rid of this stuff. Um, so we got a quote on the other end to do the abatement. That doesn't mean every piece of asbestos is moved out of the building. Cause we're not looking where we're not working. Um, but. Uh, even though the quote is more, and by the way, I knew when I, I got this quote in order to present to you. Um, at the last minute and in review of it, I knew he had mismarked some stuff up. So the actual number. Is forty one thousand, ten dollars and seventy six cents, not forty two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine. That's the reason I said not to exceed, because I knew there was. Potential error in the quote when I first got it, but I didn't have the time to deal with the contractor. Uh. So we're suggesting that we go for the more expensive fix. Make the building look a lot more modern and that we should get, we're not guaranteed, because we haven't got a grant agreement in hand. Uh, we should get, uh, in this case, it's seventeen thousand, six hundred in abatement. Uh, we should get ninety percent of that back, which brings the price down about a twenty thousand dollar change. Again. Under circumstances, other than we already had to deal with abatement, which is, we already burned up our contingency that you allow us. So we're coming before council for this. And I'm open to any questions.
So we're going with, uh, the recommended motion for tomorrow is option two, including asbestos abatement in the amount not to exceed the forty two thousand.
Correct.
Five hundred and six.
The actual quote we have now is forty one thousand, ten dollars and seventy six cents.
And then with the hopes of getting some brownfield grants to help offset some of the costs of that. Any questions from the council?
Sounds like it's gonna be really great. It's gonna be something really helpful.
It'll look nicer. It used to have three or four ceiling levels.
Three ceiling levels.
And now it'll have two still, but it'll all look the same instead of. Three different style. It, it wasn't relief like this is, that it was cover, cover, cover.
Yeah. When's your anticipation of when this work will be done?
Um, the abatement, once we approve it, they're ready to get in on it. Uh, they would be actually, they're waiting for. Our decision on this to finish their demolition and they should start at the first year, actually remodeling. We're waiting on this last item.
Great. Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And then I think the rest on here, we have, we don't have any executive sessions, so we won't really need six. We'll have our city administrators reports. We have, um, the committee reports. I will have a special events, um, committee items to report out on. And in fact, yeah, and we're appointing tomorrow, uh, somebody, uh, another person to our special events committee. So that's good. We're doing that under our consent calendar. And then, um, doesn't sound like any other business at this time. And then, um, doesn't sound like any other business at this time. But, uh, and then we would go ahead and go into our U R A. Oh, and so we have, we actually have the historic landmark commission and the U R A tomorrow night, right? So, which one should we pick first? Let's look at the U R A. So, Mr. Milliron, um, tomorrow night we'll approve the draft minutes, and then we've got another change order. On this one as well.
Roll through the state up here.
Yeah.
Roll the vacuum.
I, um. I love the photo of the, what was the original structure of that cement block in the middle there?
I believe it was an old home.
Yeah, it was a home.
That was on that site, it looked like an old bunker, but they. Uh, it, it's gone now.
Yes, but it was just like life had built up around it, basically?
Life had built up around it, and it somewhat fit the motif that was there, um, it was a little overgrown with the shrubs and bushes. For those of, of eight and chicorelli's back dining area, um, you kind of know what. Again, uh. This is partially my fault when we need. We have time as of the essence on this project, we would have liked to do what we're proposing to do now. Originally, we didn't think we were gonna have enough time. Uh. What happened during the course of construction when we did the demolition, uh. And it was brought up a little bit earlier, that there was some water problems. Um, there was a roof drain that was piped into the sanitary sewer, and also the sanitary sewer was plugged in the back of the structure. Um, so, part of what we have done in removing this is resolve that issue. We found a lot, i- if you remember the planters there, every one of those planters was rotten, um. And we were only going so far, we were just putting in the new retaining walls, but we knew were rotten. A new stairway in a small area of patio, because we knew that portion of the deck was rotten. And they were piping the drainage from all that to the existing roof drain system, now, when we pulled the roof drain apart. It's plugged up, plugged into the sanitary sewer, but plugged up. Um, and we found a lot of rot throughout, so we kept digging a little further, unfortunately, digging a little further and finding it till. Essentially, all it was left of the, it's about nine hundred square feet of decking and patio, other than the covered decking. Because there's, if you remember out there, there's a covered portion. Um, we had about fifteen by twenty left, so about three hundred square feet of the nine hundred that was left. And at that point, was a nice clean line to go to the covered decking, we removed it all. That doesn't mean we have to put it all back, however, we did get a price to quote, to put all that back, match the motif. What it allowed us to do, uh, we were putting in a fire, outdoor fireplace there, which would have been kind of in the corner. It centers it, it'll give the whole area. Access to that fireplace, uh, it'll all be in pa- patio, concrete pavers. It's not gonna rot, and again, urban renewal is fixing blight. And as we turn this over, that outdoor space is jointly serves both Long Bella and Chicorelli's. Uh, they both have access.
North Forty.
To North Forty, excuse me, not. Was used by those two entities, now will be North Forty and Salon Bella. Uh, and this should be essentially a zero maintenance improvement. For fifty years, it's not like decks that rot that we. But again, uh, we would have brought this all together at once, but we didn't think we had the time, the contractor. Said, I got it now, and think about it too, if we had. Done this. Later, let North Forty open and done this later. Uh, then all of this paper and all this would have had to been packed through the restaurant or through Salon Bella. Instead of, because we negotiated with the crows who own the parking lot in the back to. Uh, have access to there at this point, uh, we have it wide open, now's the time to do it. Unfortunately, it's an additional cost. And it actually pushed us into the prevailing wage rate, the original contract was forty-eight thousand, six hundred, um, this. Once you go over fifty thousand, subjects a whole contract, prevailing wage rates. Um, however. The pricing I actually quoted you is for non-pervailing wages that you can, and you can look it up online for new papers, I checked these things. Twenty to twenty-eight dollars a square foot, and we're paying about eighteen dollars a square foot for the new papers, under prevailing wage rate, so. Therefore, staff's recommending approval, it'll be very nice, in fact, uh. The contractor said that he would invite everybody for. Uh, barbecue before we o- open it as a set off, he would do the barbecue himself, but.
Is that barbecue in the Rogue fireplace, like?
In that, in the patio area, which isn't under lease, that's what he, he's, uh, um. It'd be a Mexican style barbecue.
Is Rogue just the brand, or is it a?
The fireplace, I, I could have given you pictures, but Rogue is actually a style. Uh, it's a nine-foot wide. Segment, the firebox is probably four feet wide, stacks up with a s-. But it's a stacked block, uh, then it has wood boxes on either side, it's just a style, I could have given you lots of pictures of, out of the books. Because it isn't built yet, but. Uh, what it look like?
And I love that we are eliminating blight and getting rid of. Weird old bunker style buildings in the salon.
So when we sell it to the people who.
Yeah, yeah, good.
And, uh, me being me, so tomorrow, when y'all take your vote, uh, the vote is not contingent on whether or not you do or do not actually get barbecue.
Yeah.
Just, yes, that, that's offered whether it's.
There's no gratuity here.
There's no gratuity there, he just, this is gonna be such a nice bait, I'll, I'll do a.
He'll be demonstrating.
He'll be demonstrating how to use the space.
Very good. Okay, so, that was the Urban Renewal Agency, we'll have a director's report, and then, um. And I think I'll take a moment now to remind, um, the. This U R A group that the Neon Blade for the Liberty Theater will be installed tomorrow morning. Do we have an exact ETA? Because I mean. So, like, how, how like on the dot at seven thirty? Are we thinking? Just asking for a friend, because I want to come down there, but I don't want to come down at seven thirty if I'm gonna wait for an hour.
But also.
You're expecting a truck to be there at seven thirty in the morning?
It's actually Park Tony Village Motor Lodge at night.
Okay, alright, so if you want to, this is historic, um, do you remember the last year that the Neon Blade was up?
So, apparently the nineteen fifties.
So.
Is what they believe.
So the Neon Blade is the thing that comes down the side and will say Liberty, and somewhere around the nineteen fifties that was taken down. Before mine, and hopefully before yours. Yeah, um, and so I just think it's really cool, you can go get your last minute photo of it tonight or tomorrow, before seven thirty tomorrow, of that building without it. And then it'll be back up there tomorrow morning at seven thirty, so come on down for the festivities. Okay, so that was U R A, then we have, um, Historic Land Commission. What's left? Can you tell us, Mr. City Administrator, remind us or our planner what we are doing here?
This is one of your required meetings.
Yes, one of our required meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, good evening, commission. So, I'm, tomorrow night, I'm gonna be asking for some guidance on. How we want to proceed with Pres- Historic Preservation Month in May of twenty twenty-four. Um, at our previous meeting, at the end of my very fun slideshow, um, we discussed. Some potential options, such as a historic preservation scavenger hunt, um, historic preservation coloring sheets. Or historic preservation workshops, and, you know, obviously, that's up to you, how you want to proceed with that, and if you have any additional ideas. Or suggestions, um, we can do one of, we can do all of, it's up to you. And how you want to proceed, but I was just looking for guidance on that, so I can start preparing st- uh, next steps for it, for May.
Right.
They're fiscal, it's like a, like money per situation?
Yeah.
I don't know that if the Historic Landmarks Commission is in your budget. No.
You can't, it's gotta happen in May, you can't tie that into July jubilee and.
We can do both.
Okay.
Well, public outreach is part of our, the contingent approval of our his, of our C L G. And so. The more public outreach we do, the better, you know, informed the community is.
Right, so, for example, in, in the past, um, July jubilees, we've had a his, local historian do a historic walk. Um, and I, uh, and I'll be letting the committee, in the committee report know tomorrow night that, um, I've asked if. He would do that again this July, and he said, yes. Um, and there's, there's other things that could be tied in to May or July, such as, you know. Even if it's somehow like some sort of signage in a building. During a wine walk that says what the original history of the meeting, the, what, what the original history of the building would be, like, say there was that. So, are, so you're looking, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying, yes, and, but there's no money.
But there's no money.
Yeah, and wait, I've got our city, uh, administrator's hand raised here.
What's the goal of this position?
I seem to recall. The Councilman Gaul specifically left a small amount of gas tax money. That government to government would actually be legally used for.
Our revenue sharing.
Yeah, and so there is, um, I don't recall how much that is, but, but there is an amount. And so, you could basically utilize that, um, but you'd have to get a memorandum, a memorandum. We gotta figure out how this commission, like, you're, you're separate, but we have to get an agreement, Mr. City Attorney. Between the city and the Historic Landmark Commission. So that we're not gifting another government money, that we actually are collectively. Doing something, does that make sense?
I don't mean to throw that, I, like, it's like my problem. Because my guess is, because at one point, the council had said. Have the Special Events Committee come up with some ideas to make recommendations on how to celebrate the Historic Landmark Commission. Um, so I, uh, we, we haven't got past July Jubilee, but I like the idea of celebrating. The buildings and the things downtown during that time. Are they, the Kusby Hotel?
Lot, lot of them turning.
They were called, they were called Kusby Hotel at once, yeah. And also, just another thing to put on the radar, I mean, that's not for this May, but it could be the kickoff. Here's something, I, I mean, again, we're just talking now and batting different ideas, um. The Liberty Theater will be a hundred years old next April. So not this coming April.
Okay, it's twenty twenty-five.
I believe, doesn't that sound right?
It's next year.
So not, not April twenty-four.
I think it's twenty twenty-four, because we, yeah. Because we pulled an entire list of all the buildings that are turning a hundred. Uh, because I worked with the county on that list, so it's next year.
So it is coming this April, so, so. If you're ask. If you're asking this group in this work session to have a discussion about how to celebrate. Um, where did we get May from?
Because that's Preservation Month.
Preservation Month in May, could we celebrate Preservation Month in May by helping the Liberty? Have a big celebration in the event tent in April, just do it a little bit early. And use some of that revenue sharing, is that a potential offer, is that a poten- a potential option?
Yes, you, you, you could do that, and in fact, well, no, I will get trouble, despite looking something out, but.
What I might recommend is that in addition to that, maybe we can make it a downtown. Kind of event and have a scavenger hunt through downtown of the historic buildings, ending at the Liberty Theater. Um, for a celebration.
I think our, yeah, um, I, I think having the buildings downtown. And also help celebrate the Liberty thing, the Liberty Hundred Year are great ideas. I just need to figure out what our role here is, our role right now to make recommendations, because we want to be careful of what are. What are, what we're doing, because I don't want to look at like, yes, yes, come up with two grand and let's have a party in the.
You go right ahead and do all the work and come up with the money.
We are, we are clearly aware that that's take time, money, but.
Yes.
Um, let's, okay, so let's walk through, is there a potential for the Special Events Committee to work with? The Historic Land Commission, which is us, so us and us, work together with our tourism director and our U R A director, which is her and her. Right, so us and us and her and her to work together, could we all like, figure that out?
I, I think I heard once before, can't we all just get along?
Right, is there, I mean, is. Let me ask the Landmark Commission if they would ask the council to ask the Special Events Committee to work with the city planner and the U R A. And the visitor center manager and the main street manager to come up with a plan. Could we ask that?
But Mark out of that.
I agree, I want to add a caveat, very important caveat, if we are already planning an event. A- around when we're supposed to do this, why don't we join them so that?
So I know.
It's just, well, it's another thing, we're relying on the charity of our staffers to run these things, but yes.
I mean, we could ask the.
For April, May, or July, that's the question.
Right, so, so we have a couple things here, we know that the July Jubilee is happening this year, so great opportunity to celebrate, continue to celeb- the celebration.
I, I, I would like to counter, I think that, you know. A former, a formal presentation to the Main Street Board might be in order. Since most of the hundred-year-old buildings is within the district downtown.
Yeah.
And if you have a little money that you can throw at it, I think you could commingle a lot, and, and, um. And, and then you can get those hundred-year-old businesses involved, but. I mean, I, 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 that's, I, I would commingle the Historic Landmark Commission to sort of. You know, authorize your chair to go talk to, make a presentation to the Main Street Board. And, and see if we get them on board, um, and then go to the, then go to the city. And see if they will do a inter, uh, memo of understanding or intergovernment agreement with the Historic Landmark. Com- Commission, so you get money. On my head, that seems to work out.
Is, um, is our city planner the chair of the landmark, land, Historic Landmark Commission?
I, the Historic Preservation Officer.
Officer.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think you're the chair, do we have like, do officers? Do they have bylaws or anything?
Okay, so tomorrow.
She's chairing it, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, so it's her.
Yeah.
It's you.
Okay, it's me.
Uh-huh, you're the chair.
Yeah, so, um, okay, so tomorrow night, during item agenda for our Historic Preservation Month item. We would be asking this Historic Landmark Commission to.
One.
Send you.
One, authorize you to go and seek support from the Main Street Board. Which is its own independent board.
You're gonna have to be convincing mayor.
Okay, and I think Steve Dye is president of that board, um. Two, um, uh, we authorize, uh, uh, yes, that's under that. Then, um, we authorize the chair. To work with the city council on a I G A written up by. Mark Wolf, so that we can collectively work together financially.
Okay. And could we also then ask the Landmark Commission to ask the council to ask this Special Events Committee? Because we have some citizen, we're appointing a new person tomorrow, so this is another item that the Special Events Committee can work.
Yeah, you can take a recommendation to the council, um, yeah, under the council hat, yes, um.
So when would we do that piece?
You'll have to do that under your committee, whatever thing of what you need.
Committee report tomorrow night?
Yeah.
That could be another, so like tomorrow night during this committee reports.
We could authorize.
We could authorize this special committee to work with the Landmark Commission.
Yeah.
And then you get this citizen piece in there. A chart?
No, I want three hats.
Yes.
And then that way in January, so based on all that, if we get an I G A in January. Because come January is when we'll start to look at the grants, I think, for, uh, the gas tax. And then that will be when we can figure out how you're going to give you up that. how you're going to give you up that money, and so that could be addressed in January, once we have the I G A in place, that then could help you with. Yeah.
Yeah.
There was something, I'd have to go back and look at the record.
Each year, yes. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so Historic Land Preservation Month, um, and then anything else, did you get all that, Mr.?
I, I believe so.
Well, we have finished our agenda to go through for the Historic Landmark Commission, we have finished the agenda to go through the U R A, and we've finished going through our council chamber or council meeting, so that takes us back to, uh, to nine nine.
German.
Yeah, just make sure I didn't miss anything.